Yat eh, shik e doh shidneh. Che di kodo, Profilia Fowler deshidneh. Ma ideh skizni, shan tohre che ni bashis chin. Tapaha eh dashe chedoh, asch eh dashe naleh. Chodzus ahol yere, ah eh isuch eshik eh. Ko kuaetso ahot zan deh, talad deh na't'ani itleni. Naxan dalneh sheh, bikh eh est i idoh, aj eh ya shenamish esh eh. Ah ro eh keh eh, ko jehachadna'dah se yokh gezi shik eh doh shidneh. Kodo shehin tohre zenlini be'ah ilneh doleh. Ah nit eh eh, nichit tohre zen hollon doh, ah, ah eh ya. Nicheh o tla nazlan deh tohre zen eh. Be'eh nit eh shik eh doh shidneh, kodo sheh eh tohdeel zen doleh. Kodo hujon doleh, nahah sahshemah yadel heh. Zehli san, tuis san, chaal heh, hayol kal nahodeh tsui. Halch eh heh, halch eh wan. Nadal keh, nadal tsui. Chadetin, nltani, sa'ah na'ray bit eh hujon. Kodo eh hondi, beni biye, ndanahe galneh. Nani chedoh, ah kuijeh eh nit eh tohdeel zen. Kon nichit deneh be'kai chaz ah negi. Ya't eh goh, nichilnahui doh, al eh di noh, ah tohdeel zen. Chashineh, na'ohon nit eh tohdeel zen, ah ro nichihin dan daditsi. Naxanahi la'doh, naxadadiino, eh nihinsen. Ah ro eh ya, kon alha'ani zenoh. Kon nichik eh dan lini, naxa hashthuin nichesani. Nichit tzalkejeh keh, nichiyajin nicheh eh weh. Ah eh niltsko, kon nichit zalal tsoda dan lini kon. Ya't eh goh, nichilnahui doh, al. Pa'ro alha'ani zenoh kon, nichik et adon leh, nichit it aj ohon. Naxa aholiya doleh. Ah doh eh shi kon daldoh, nichit aj ohuinsen doleh. Ni belghejeh, naxa altsineh, nichit oned dan lini kon, altshuin ya't eh goh. Nadah keh doleh, ya't eh, nichilnaho'ah doleh. Kon nazgonet nejeh eh kon, njuno eh kesmish yajit nada illeh kesmish. Ah ro kon, nichel nada doh, naxgonet nejeh eh nata ilteh doh eh nitzen. Ah ro kon, naxan dalneh shit altshuin, benelni, naxabelhun loh doleh. Nichit tzikeh ese il, eh neh dan lini. Ese eh ndeh kai talah, it's isn deh jahil kon, kon deh lsesedah altshuin. Nichinat'ani dan lini kon, be'eshbaha sa'ah neh, tchatna'snileh danleh talad deh na't'ani. Naxa hashthuin nichesani kon, benelni, nichit chohon, yezozedan loh. Nahat'ah doh, nan tchin naxan deh slaneh, kon, shahoh ik etah huin mil idoh. Nazgonet nejeh deh nit leh doleh kon, chaman nahah san lini kon. Di yendeneh eh dan ohlini kon, nicheh eh doh, nichit, nichit lingo hon chetzit tohdeel zen kon. Ya't eh goh, nani keh doleh, altshuin benen lini kon. Ben tsoid ah eh kodo, benashni doh, benelni doleh. Kon ya't eh goh, nadeh keh doleh, ha'goshin ch'ah deh keh, etah atah huiliya doleh kon. Nazgonet nejeh, kon tsoga eh tohre zen lini kon, ah ncheh deh. Be'hananasi doleh, be'la'ishla, be'ohishla eh on. Di yendeneh eh dan ohlini be' nichilnahon nit doleh. Ah di deh, nichit ch'eh, hujon nahaslin, hujon nahaslin, hujon nahaslin, hujon nahaslin. Nicheh eh shik eh doh shidneh, kashin kodo, nichinat'ah lini kon, Johnathan, President Johnathan. Shchtoh nahneh neh doh, shchaleh, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Yat eh, ahro, kuan, chatzudin zenegi, Dr. Fowler. Yeah, sister. And everyone that's watching the town hall today. We appreciate you tuning in. We're here in Black Mesa, Arizona, at the Peabody Mine. And as many of you know, the Peabody Mine is in reclamation. Because of the Navajo Generating Station closure. That's where the coal was going from Peabody to, close to Chichi. And now, the mine is going to be closing. So, reclamation is happening. They're going to be cleaning things up and trying to put this land back to its original state. And I know it's going to be difficult, but you know, we're taking a tour with the Peabody team members here. And they're letting us know about the reclamation efforts. So that's why we're here. And then if you look over here, you can see some of the remnants of the coal mining. And you can see the smoke. They are burning off some of the access coal there so that they can put all the dirt back into the mine there. So it could be cleaned up, reclaimed, back to its original state. So it's going to take many years. And we're up here taking a tour. And we do have cell services, so we want to be able to give you an update, continue giving you update. And ladies and gentlemen, I want to really emphasize this. We are seeing some increases in daily cases all around us. And that's affecting us here on Navajo. We are traveling, we go off the nation, and then we, you know, we take off our masks for some reason or another. And you know, this Delta variant is very contagious. And so, you know, we, we want you to be able to take care of yourself and remind yourself, remind your family members to wear your mask, social distance, wash your hands. If you, if you need hand sanitizers, please contact the Health Command Operations Center. You know, we can, if you have some containers of the old hand sanitizers, we can refill those. There's hand sanitizers that are, that are available if you just contact our office for your family. And remember, it's for our hands, nothing else, okay? Please. We also had stories of people ingesting some of these, and we don't want anybody to get hurt. So, please, we've seen big, big numbers in communities here on the Navajo Nation. We have the ability, ladies and gentlemen, we've done it before. Bring those numbers down as we go into the holiday season, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Years. You know, let's, you know, stay focused on pushing back on COVID-19. You know, wearing our masks, social distancing, washing your hands with soap and water, using hand sanitizer, and also staying at home and getting vaccinated. We have had vaccination events happening all over the Navajo Nation. Boosters are available. We were just in Pinion this morning. Those of you that are, live in Pinion or the surrounding communities, booster shots are being available. You can get your first shot, your second shot, if you haven't get it. And then children too, five to 11-year-olds, you know, there's an approval that has happened. You can get your children vaccinated. And of course, we already know 12 and over, you can get vaccinated as well. So, you know, contact your local healthcare facility or check out our Facebook page. We'll have a schedule. I know Eli's working on it. We should be able to get that posted today of all the vaccination events that are happening here on the Navajo Nation. So, you know, we encourage people to get vaccinated as well. And so the update, we had had yesterday's report. And just keep in mind, Mondays and Tuesdays, the reports come in slowly from the states. We partner with the states and the county health departments. And so, we know our numbers that are here on the Navajo Nation, but we also, those that leave the Navajo Nation are relatives, that become patients in other healthcare facilities. You know, they're overseen by the county and the state epidemiology department. So, you know, God forbid, you know, if we lose one of our relatives off the Navajo Nation, it takes time for the, the report to get updated. And that's just like that with, with all the states as well. So just to let you know, Monday and Tuesdays, usually low numbers. And then we get caught up with all the updated information. So, yesterday, we had 39 cases, daily case counts with zero, with zero deaths. Of the 39, four COVID-positive cases were delayed. And so that was for Sunday. And if you could put that, Eli, I don't know if you could put that slide on the, on the presentation today? Just to let you all know of all the servicing areas here on the Navajo Nation, including the border towns. And remember, this is the start of the pandemic. And you know, 37,455 people have caught COVID-19. But we also need to remember too, that 35,000 of those, 314, have recovered. And those recovery numbers are still coming in as well, so keep that in mind. But over 1,000, well, 1,000, to be exact, 1,498 of our Navajo people have lost their lives to COVID-19. So our thoughts and prayers go out to our families, our communities, those that are, you know, directly impacted by COVID-19. I think all of us are. We know somebody that has COVID, maybe know somebody who has passed, relatives, friends. And so, you know, we just continue to lift the Navajo Nation up in prayer. And we just ask, you know, many of these cases that we are seeing are unvaccinated people, right? Unvaccinated. And those that are leaving us as well, that are dying from COVID-19, unvaccinated. So it's important, and we encourage you to, to get vaccinated. The second slide there shows you the chart of the entire pandemic. You know, if you see the slide there, March 1st of 2020, you saw that first spike in cases, that first big wave that happened during the spring break and into, into May. And then we, we managed to bring that down because we had, we had, you know, all these stay-at-home orders as well, and government wasn't operating. We brought it down very significantly in September of last year. And guess what? We let down, we let down, you know? We said, the virus is going away, we got low cases, and guess what? That's when we probably took off our masks, and then we saw an increase. And that increase was during the holiday season too. And if you look at the chart there, right around September 1st was very low. And then October is when we started moving up. And look at what happened in November, December, January, significant increase. And we're going into the holiday season again, ladies and gentlemen. Let's not let up, let's continue to be strong and let everybody know that COVID is still here. But what's different now than last year is the vaccine. And so vaccination is very important, especially for those that are most vulnerable, you know, that have health issues. And then into March, you see the chart, May, July, we did, you all done an excellent job because of the vaccination. You know, those vaccinations, our healthcare experts are saying that, what is it? It lasts like about, what, six months around that time? And then it starts being less effective. And that's why it's very important to get the booster, the booster shot, or the third shot, as they, as they, as they have saying, mentioned at our healthcare facility. So the third is, and there are breakthrough cases, ladies and gentlemen. Breakthrough cases mean even if you got the shot, you still can catch the virus. Yes, even if you have the vaccination, you can still get COVID-19. So we still, even, even if you got the shot, you still wear your mask, still social distance, still wash your hands, ladies and gentlemen, and stay home as much as possible. And it's very important that we do that. And then you can see towards the end of the chart there, September 1st, November 1st, man, it's fluctuating. You get a lot of cases one day, goes down another, and it just keeps going up and down. And we're letting down again. Let's not let down. Let's get a commitment by all of us out there, Navajo people. Ashhona, kodo eh ya, di kesmish yajido, kajida dan, oh jeez. Ah doh kesmish, ah ro nahahcha, eh di alha'ih chahat dan. Shan, last year, ye goh, te deh skit, deneh be'keh obakao. Di nahshnegi, dikosin chragi, nichik eh ni neh be'da doh na'agi. Ah, ah konadon, nich nahahlen. Eh beni na, hadainos neh doh, kodo, nichemers chudash eh doh, ah doh. Leh, nichik eh ni neh, hadeshi, keh deh hat eh negi ya. Chutoh nich espeda, son da hadeshin da, keh nichik eh ni neh ya. Shadab, bedo'osna'ahn, haneh ya'goh. Di dikosin chragi, nichidoh, jehod eh. Ah ro, nichik kodo hogenjeh, nani it zagoh. Nichik eh ni hinneh, beda da doh na. So eh beni na, nichijobat, eh ni keh, ya'ashhona deh. Ah da'dahal ya'doh, ah ni yela'doh, tchalawesth, be', be', tchadahkes. Ah ro ah hogen, ndasoh, tchah ah eh ha. Ah eh na'anthinegi, eshik eh noh lini. Ah eh it eh, di kon ba'andah huilneh. Edesh nit alha'shin eh, ya'arallada doh neh huinsenm deh. Joo ah eh na'anthinegi, ben nacheh eh di, be'chidi, kahod eh, shik eh doh shidneh. Ashhona deh. Ah ro di dikosin chragi, ez, be'kejeh na'anshigi, ezeh, hazlin, ya'eh nit esh. Chashi naxadah esh tsin. Alha'ana kidanah zen, naxadah esh tsin. Ka'thad, kon, nichik eh ni hinneh, be'jeh al, ya'thad, naxadah esh. Joo ah it na'alha'ana'ha. Jadi dikosin flushats dahan. Nigidoh ahhot eh ya, ana'cha, naxadah esh tsin. Di shi doh ahhot eh doleh, shik eh noh lini. Altsin doh, naxaltsin eshla. Binda'ha'egi doh, nasnleh, chatzatap, binda'ha'egi, ka'ba'at eh. Kon naxaltsineh eh ya, ba'dah esh la. Nicheh kodo nichijobat, eh ni keh, shik eh noh lini, naxaltsineh. Ezeh, bahalonegi, eh ba, ba'dah esh doleh, shadhi noh. Nichijobat, eh ni keh, shik eh noh lini. Ah doh, if you go to the next slide, Eli, this is the COVID-19 vaccination status among Navajo Nation residents only. That means the Navajo people that are living on the Navajo Nation. Remember, our Navajo people live off the nation, they have come home, they got their shots here on Navajo, and then they went back off the Navajo Nation, and they're living out there. This is just Navajo people that are living on our nation. And this, this data that is on the slide is 12 years and older. Remember, 5 to 11, it opened up. It's not counting the 5 to 11 yet, because that data is still coming in. But for 12 and older, those are eligible to get their shot, fully vaccinated, that's two shots. And you remember, people are getting their third shot now. But total eligible residents that are fully vaccinated, over 70%. And I'm sure that's going to go up because a lot of folks that I've talked to at Crown Point this past weekend, they were waiting for their child, their children, that's five years and over, to get their shot. And so they, they wanted to come and get their shot as a family. So they got their shot, all of them vaccinated, which is going to continue to increase the percentage here for the Navajo Nation. Now, total population, that's everyone that's come to the Navajo Nation to get a shot. Those are people that live off the Navajo Nation too, and 57% fully vaccinated. But I just want you to focus on that. The lower one, the light blue one, Navajo Nation residents that are on the Navajo Nation that are fully vaccinated, over 70%. Now, the next slide there shows the comparison with the United States. And I talked about the first wave, second wave, third wave. Now go all the way towards the end of that slide. You can see that the United States, which is a dark blue one, was going down significantly, right? And then you can see now, it's starting to go back up, it's fluctuating. I think the reason why the fluctuation is happening is because people are vaccinated. And majority of the people that are ending up on this data are the unvaccinated individuals. Yes, there are breakthrough cases, but they don't end up in the hospital for a very long time. They might just go to the hospital to get their monoclonal antibody treatment. And then they're out, back at home, back in quarantine, and they get well quick. But those that are unvaccinated are starting to be taken off the Navajo Nation to these hospitals. Now, like last year, these hospitals are going to get full if this trend keeps going up. And we just don't want our Navajo people to be told, you know, you can't come to this hospital because we're full. Last, or yesterday, I was told by the Indian Health Services that some of these are Navajo residents that have gotten COVID, that need to go to a hospital, or even going as far as Louisiana, to be seen. And we, we need you all to be careful out there, ladies and gentlemen. And the orange, you can see, it's, the orange is the Navajo Nation. And you can see that progression keeps going up and up and up. We started hitting a plateau, we're going a little bit down towards the end of the PowerPoint. But let's not get too excited, even though it's going down. Let's continue to stay the course as well. The next slide shows you a comparison of all the states around us, they're all in yellow. The red is the Navajo Nation. This is the chart where all the states are compared. And look at the Navajo Nation, it's yellow. And now we're, per capita, and keep this in mind, per capita, we're above all the states in COVID-positive cases daily. The next one, right underneath the Navajo Nation is Colorado. And then right underneath Colorado, the third line, or the yellow, the red. The second, red down, is New Mexico, and then Utah, and then Arizona. And that's how we are compared with other states, ladies and gentlemen. So I'll end there, I'm going to turn the time over to Vice President Lizer. He's on there, right? He's on there, and again, I just want everyone to stay safe. We love you, and we continue to say that throughout this whole pandemic. I know there are people that, you know, say things, that's just how this world is these days. But you know what, from us, our leadership, our leaders here, we care about you, and we care about your well-being. We want you to live 102, 104 years old. In order to do that, you know, sometimes we've got to have to follow instructions. And following instruction is key, you know, taking care of your health, of being active, of being, eating good foods, you know, getting vaccinated, you know, we're in an uncertain time now here on the Navajo Nation, really all over the world. And let's just take better care of our, of ourselves at home and encourage our young people to continue to follow these protocols that are in place for our, our health and well-being. So, thank you so much, take care of yourself. Continue to tell our Navajo brothers and sisters, don't stop following these guidelines. God bless you, God bless our great Navajo Nation. And turn the time over to our Vice President, Vice President Myron Lizer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Yat eh, beneh, good to see you all out there in cyberspace land on this town hall. It is November night, so thank you for joining us, appreciate our residents' leadership out there in the field. So we still, as leaders, have to do what we need to do to advance, to advocate, to work hard to mitigate this virus, and then the normal course of business of running a nation, right? The largest nation in the United States, over 400,000 members, and the largest land base. So it takes a lot, and then we have a pandemic to mitigate, to try to increase the outcome for our people. So this is great, good time, and appreciate our president's leadership, yeah, Mr. President. So here we are again, appreciate you all, Vice President Myron Lizer, Comanche Mishle, Trolhana, bashis chin. Ahro, Comanche deshicheh, ash deshinali, it's good to be with you all again today. Thank you that you all have joined us here. So as I always do, give our numbers, but also a little bit of news as well. And then I'll hand it over to our health professionals, Dr. Jill Jim, and all of our Epi Team, and Dr. Captain Brian Johnson, and Dr. Profilia Fowler. Appreciate all of our teams' leadership as we continue to mitigate this virus here and this pandemic. So more broadly, the United States, the US-Mexico border reopens to vaccinated tourists. Fully vaccinated travelers are allowed to enter the United States if they can show proof of vaccination and a negative coronavirus test taken within three days before departure. The lifting of the US ban from dozens of countries ends more than 18 months of restriction. The restrictions on international travel that separated families and cost the global travel industry hundreds of billions of dollars. So this has far-reaching effects here, this pandemic does. The policy shift has come in time for the holiday season. So when the tourism industry is eagerly awaiting an influx of international visitors. So, oh, you know, when you say that, we potentially again could be receiving new people holding the virus. And so important to continue to maintain our protocols and our measures here to stay safe from this virus. In New York alone, the absence of tourists in 2020 resulted in the loss of $60 billion in revenue and wiped out 89,000 jobs across retail, arts, culture, hotels, and transportations. And this is just in New York, the state of New York. So imagine what it's meant nationally. Here in Arizona, a little bit closer to home, the positivity rate for reported COVID-19 diagnostic testing done last week was 12%, the highest recorded on dashboard since last week of July. Positive cases, 19 months into this, 1,195,483. This is with 19,963, so almost 10,000 new cases within the last five days. That's a huge hefty number. Just as of yesterday, 3,118 new cases in Arizona. A little bit closer to home, Apache County, 14,585 with 12 new cases. Navajo County, 22,446 with 100 new cases, wow, 100 cases. So you see, there's still some surging going on, although limited, but still higher than normal. Coconado County, 23,920 with 146 new cases. So we're seeing some higher numbers, although they are plateaued at a, you know, higher realm, still cause for concern. Colorado, as you know, we have land in Colorado. As of Monday, the state's seven-day positivity rate is 9.49%, which is up from 8.69%. So we're seeing an increase there. The highest positivity rate over the state in, over the past seven days is Yuma County with 24.9% positivity. Total positive cases, 768,646 with 1,718 new cases to report there in Colorado. New Mexico, New Mexico is one of the few states in the country where masks are required inside, even if you've been vaccinated. So total mask mandate throughout the state of New Mexico. Total positive cases, 286,086 with 6,416 within the last five days. New cases as of yesterday, 3,370. So we see the numbers there are pretty high there in New Mexico, higher than normal. San Juan County, 23,501 the last 19 months with 520 new cases. Wow, so San Juan County, continue to be vigilant, stay safe. McKinley County, total McKinley County, total positive cases, fifteen thousand six hundred and fourteen with one hundred and thirty-eight new cases to report there. In Utah, rounding out our tri-state area here around the Navajo Nation, under the state's original method, the rate of positive cases is sixteen point seven percent over the past three days. Over point eight percent. Total positive cases, five hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-six with eight thousand one hundred and thirteen new cases within the last five days. New cases, this is a three-day uh over the past weekend, three thousand nine hundred and seventy-two in Utah. Uh, San Juan County there in southeastern Utah, two thousand five hundred and twenty-six with fifty-four new cases within the last five days. Our own Utah Navajo Health System, one thousand two hundred and sixty-one with fifteen new cases within the last five days. And in closing, uh, as I alert Dr. Jim to get ready, as I will pass it on to her. Um, free federally authorized uh vaccines are widely available. Uh, the minimum age to receive Pfizer shots is five years old and it's eighteen for the other available versions of Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson. The US Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, unvaccinated people nationwide are six point one times more likely to get infected and eleven point three times more likely to die from are more than to die than people who were fully vaccinated. So, you know, it's all within us to continue to uh stay safe. And uh, as our president has given you that, and we're gonna hear more from our health professionals here to uh, look at the data and become knowledgeable and make decisions therein. So pray about it. Obviously, we, as leaders, continue to pray like it depends on us, but we're gonna uh, we work like it depends on us, but we pray like it depends on our Creator, Shajadi and God. So we appreciate the prayer, opening prayer today, uh, the work of our president, the work of our cabinet, our division directors, our program managers and the like, and our twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council. Again, we are all in this together. So we say a prayer again for you all. Be safe. Continue to mask up, sanitize, wash your hands, clean common surface areas. Be safe out there. And we look forward to convening with you again soon, real soon. So until then, hug going at from the Vice President and the Office of the President and Vice President. We appreciate you, love you, praying for you. So now I'd like to introduce Dr. Jill Jim, who's standing by readily, ready, willing, and able. We appreciate Dr. Jim's uh leadership in this fight and mitigating the coronavirus here in this pandemic. Nineteen months of solid work, solid effort, and a lot of uh commitment and a lot of sacrifice. So thank you, Dr. Jim, for all you do for the Navajo people.
Thank you, Vice President Natani, for all your kind words and all your um updates regarding COVID nineteen. We work on this every single week in order to get people up to date on the extreme levels of um COVID nineteen um transmission. So I'm Dr. Jill Jim. I'm the Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health. I just want to be brief, and I know that um individuals might come on to the town hall um thinking that why isn't there anything different? And I think there's always something good in this. Um, there isn't anything different that we say other than um that we are updating our numbers regarding how extreme our cases have is getting worse or not getting worse. And I think we want to monitor those to let people know how we're doing. Um, here at the Health Command Center, we collect um information on exposures and reports. Um, we have businesses and schools that are required and travel programs are required to report to our Health Command Operations Center portal to identify um potential exposure so we can um address it at the beginning, so we can make sure there isn't any office transmission or school um transmission. And that's the goal of the response is if we can tackle this early enough and also reiterating that individuals that are sick, even thinking if they have allergies or just the flu, that they ought to stay home. So I think that is the other message that we need to convey is at at any time if you feel sick, um, please stay home as much as you can. And we talked about um having a plan in place several times about uh making sure if you're sick, having enough food, having someone do errands for you and situations like that, I think are gonna become very important. We don't have quarantine and isolation play hotels like we had before. And now that hotels are operating across the Navajo Nation, it might be a little bit more difficult to get sort of that commitment for doing isolation in quarantine hotels and because um everyone else in the general public is using it. So I just wanted to just reiterate that it's important to plan and prepare in going into the holiday season. And one thing that we talked about last week was just the importance of um getting the five-year-olds and eleven-year-olds vaccinated. And so I know, I think Captain Johnson might speak to some of the um acceptable vaccines that are available for the lower age groups now. And then the ongoing booster or third doses that's available for everybody. We want everyone to be as much fully protected from against COVID as we can going into the holidays. And um I know our numbers are really high. It's discouraging and sometimes we might ask why. But I think a lot has to do with our individual behaviors, but also some might be unexplainable where we are um seeing high rates just in general and and Dell might speak to that as well um across our neighboring states. So when there's high transmission, we try to do the best that we can to keep them members down. But one thing that we know is that people still need to get care. So if you do COVID or you don't have COVID, I think that's one thing that is impacting our healthcare system right now. We've been um delaying our own personal care for a very long time. And the health facilities, not only on the Navajo Nation, but across the United States are feeling um this sort of impact at their healthcare system. And I know um possibly that um Captain Johnson will speak to that as well. And we want to make sure that we don't um, we don't go into another lockdown, but we've done that before. And our healthcare system is really the um tipping point where we will make decisions on how um our healthcare systems are capable of providing care to our, to the Navajo people. So I think that's one important message is what can we do as individuals um so we don't tip over our healthcare system and overwhelm them because we, they don't have enough resources. No one has enough resources right now. And I think we've mentioned this over and over before, how staff and healthcare professionals are also burnt out. So um, Apa, Batahunus, and like being careful also, I think, um, in Navajo, maybe Dr. Fowler can speak to caring for our healthcare professionals, understanding that we have to think about other people and um on also ourselves and how our actions might contribute to trying to keep our numbers down and staying home or also still being safe and making sure we're not gathering without our mask and while we're walking around out there sick. So I think that's just a quick reminder in these town halls are that place. There's, we are gonna reiterate things. We will say them differently, but we will reassure you that this week is gonna be a different story than next week because um in some cases, we uh see encouraging numbers that our cases might be slightly down, but it's not down, it's not low enough. So I hope that we are gonna trend down and that's the hope that we have. And we don't um want a lot of people ending up in the hospital like getting sick. So vaccines are the place to be. We do have a medicine for it. So I just wanted to quickly reiterate that. I know that we mentioned all the restrictions on social gathering and many of us on today's call will reiterate some of what I'm saying, but I wanted to just share my thoughts, uh, brief thoughts with you because I'm going to have Dell, who's uh with the Navajo Epi Center and does a gating criteria report every week. And then um we'll certainly um give time to Captain Johnson and Dr. Fowler. I could be out of order. I think we do actually um go straight to Captain Johnson and then Dell. Sorry. So Captain Johnson, can you go ahead and do the Navajo area report on what's happening here with our Indian Health Service facilities? So uh and then it will be Dell afterwards. So take it away, Captain Johnson.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Dr. Jim. Hey, I really appreciate that. And um, and uh, the the opportunity here to be here on on a Tuesday to share, continue sharing information as we work our way through the the pandemic. And I also want to thank President Nez and Vice President Lizer for for their work and dedication. I I do uh come across them out in the field. As of last week, we saw each other in the field um uh celebrating an event for a new new healthcare facility. So that was nice to see them out and about as well uh again last week. So and then Dr. Jim, for your continued leadership with the Department of Health and um all the transparency that's been provided through Facebook and other measures uh on the radio and and so forth. It's very hopeful, I know, uh, to the Navajo people. And I, and I know that oftentimes um the amount of information that we get these days can be quite uh confusing. But we do try to uh present our messages in a way that um most can um grasp and and understand, given the quantity of information that um is being sent out, whether that's on the web or internet or uh other other sources of uh information. So this this type of opportunity on the town hall here specific to the Navajo Nation, I think, is very helpful in uh being able to share uh information uh locally. And then to have that interpreted in Navajo is is even more critical, of course, for our local population. Um, just wanted to mention that, uh, of course, the IHS, the Indian Health Service, uh, in our tribal partners, we continue to work closely, uh, not only with uh our tribal programs, but our urban Indian program and and flagstaff and working with, of course, the surrounding states and and public health officials. Uh, we also work with the Veterans Administration and others uh to coordinate a comprehensive public health response to the ongoing pandemic. So a tremendous amount of work that has gone on and and we certainly, from the Indian Health Service perspective, appreciate all of our partners that have been uh so supportive throughout the pandemic in uh providing uh, you know, either staffing and or working with us to make sure the vaccinations are completed and 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 other great work that has been going on now for or since March of two thousand twenty. So um it it certainly has been, you know, we know it's been a difficult year and a half. And uh we just, we just really do appreciate um the continuing uh willingness and uh dedication of fighting, pushing back against the virus. And um then also the fact that we're working together to continue to encourage vaccinations so that we can get back to uh normal, so to speak. So um, and I think, I think this pandemic has has done a lot in terms of educating us as we've gone along. So we realize that it has been a very challenging time for all of us. But it's also highlighted the need for uh comprehensive culturally appropriate uh personal, not only personal, uh, but public health services that are available and accessible to our populations that we serve. And so um we've tried, uh, I know in working together to, how do we improve this? You know, how do we make sure our services are culturally appropriate? And um looking not only at the individual patient who visits a healthcare facility, but also the population as a whole. And when we look at the Navajo Nation or communities or chapters as a whole, uh, that helps us out tremendously and better understanding and addressing uh this uh disease. So um, again, and I know that here momentarily Dell Yazi uh will be sharing some information. And we always appreciate Dell, his work and and the work of the Epi team there at Navajo Nation, who have uh continued throughout uh the pandemic to do what they can to to share information with the Navajo people broadly and putting it in a format that can be understood because it can get quite complicated. And I think there's been some outstanding work in that area. And so we we do appreciate them and and the partnership that we've seen there as well. But we continue um to look at, of course, case numbers, uh, positive case numbers, so positive test results. Well, we we continue to monitor our hospital uh bed capacities. And when I talk about beds, I'm talking about inpatient beds. But we also have to look at our intensive care units, as well as our emergency departments and all of our hospital facilities to understand, uh, are we at capacity? Are we reaching capacity? Are we exceeding capacity? And if so, what measures are we taking to make sure that we're providing the best services possible um during that time? And um we also, we've talked for many, many months about contact tracing and just how critical that is across the Navajo Nation. And not only to have staff, contact tracing staff in place, but then also to mount a response whenever we do come across um a, a, let's say, a a small outbreak or uh maybe it's a family gathering that we found where there was a several people that became positive. It's critical that those be moved on very quickly in an expedited way to uh make sure that folks who are positive, um, who become positive are isolated and uh make sure that um they're taken care of and that they they are not exposing others unknowingly. So uh very, very important. And and if there's any contact tracing staff out there listening, I want to thank you for all of your efforts. And I know that that can be a tiring uh job, but uh your efforts are definitely appreciated and has been the cent- one of the center points of this uh of this pandemic. So um again, when we look at the national scene, we know that uh to date there's been administered over one point seven million vaccines across Indian country. And when I talk about Indian country, that includes uh tribes across all the uh lower forty-eight plus, the um uh uh up in Alaska or over, up in Alaska as well. And um that's, that's a tremendous effort that's been mounted, um, again, since vaccines became available. And we're certainly appreciative of everyone who's been involved in that. And uh we also continue to know that vaccines are the safest and most effective way to prevent COVID nineteen, including those serious consequences of the disease. So nothing has changed in that way. We do know that there are, uh, there is misinformation and we've mentioned this and we'll continue to mention this. There's been a tremendous amount of misinformation. Um, there's sharing of misinformation because communication these days can move so quickly, whether it's, whether it's uh on the internet, um, in in some type of video or whether it's in email fashion, uh, information moves quickly and sometimes too quickly. And sometimes it's not um uh information that's checked for uh for facts and um can be erroneous, which which certainly in this pandemic has been problematic. And so um just want to point out again, and I'll mention it before, one more time before we uh, before I end here on this town hall, that vaccines are the safest and most effective way to prevent COVID nineteen. Okay? So um we are definitely focused on staying ahead of the virus by making sure people have optimal protection against COVID nineteen infection, severe illness and health. And we'll talk just a little bit here about not only the two-dose series, but also the booster uh vaccines that are um uh available. And uh, and again, we're basing all of the efforts that we practice on on the science that we know to be accurate. And um that's, that's not listening to hearsay or listening to reports by, you know, individuals on the internet. It's, we're just basically following the science and uh and that's how we know that uh we are, it's, we're we're in an area where it's safe and effective. So um in terms of the vaccine boosters, I I believe everyone is aware, and it's even been mentioned here again this morning, that um the FDA authorized booster doses of COVID nineteen vaccines from um Moderna, uh Johnson &amp; Johnson, as well as uh booster doses for the for the Pfizer vaccine. So over time, uh, all three, and we've talked about these three manufacturers of COVID nineteen uh vaccine and uh booster doses, but um it, they weren't all simultaneously approved. It it took a little bit of a a a number of days for all three of those to become uh approved for uh the booster doses. So very important for folks to know that. So if you've had a two-dose series and you um and it's been um at least um uh six months ago uh for uh Moderna and Pfizer, then then um if you're eighteen years and older, then then you are um certainly uh eligible for a COVID nineteen uh booster shot from from those uh two manufacturers. Uh, when we talk about um the uh Johnson &amp; Johnson is actually the one that's eighteen years and older. Um, and and if you have had that particular vaccine at least two months ago, then you're eligible. months ago, then you're eligible for a, a booster dose. So, um, you know, just want to make sure that people, it, it gets, it does get confusing with the booster doses and who is eligible and who is, and maybe who is not at this point in time. But it's important that you, um, reach out to your, um, local healthcare facility because they have the most up-to-date information on, um, supplies that they have, as well as any, uh, scheduled, uh, uh, booster vaccinations that, that they'll be providing, as well as also, um, any, any two-dose series vaccinations that they'll be providing as well. So, so don't hesitate to reach out to your local, um, healthcare facility and, and request information on that. And when you, uh, should come in, you can also oftentimes make an appointment, but oftentimes they're also doing a group, uh, vaccinations that, uh, they're, they're doing at various locations. So, um, also just wanted to mention that, um, while, while boosters offer the opportunity to reinforce that, you know, our vaccine protection that we've had, the two-dose series that we've had before, our primary goal in the healthcare arena is still encouraging vaccination, the vaccination of those who have not yet been vaccinated. So, uh, individuals out there who, who remain unvaccinated, um, we, we highly encourage that, um, you, you consider and, uh, hopefully become vaccinated with the two-dose series. Um, and, uh, it, it, it's so critical at this juncture in the pandemic, very, very important. And, uh, we know that, that the FDA and the CDC Centers for Disease Control continue to evaluate, uh, the vaccination data as it becomes available. And, um, and they'll continue to share information on this and we continue to, uh, track their information and they can, as they continue to share that with, with all of us. Um, and I, I know it was mentioned here, but also, um, in regards to the, uh, five to eleven-year-old age group, we know that, um, we know that, um, on November the second, sort of just seven days ago, the Advisory Council on Immunization Practices, uh, recommended the Pfizer COVID nineteen vaccine, uh, series, two-dose series for children fives to eleven years old. And, um, once the Advisory Council on Immunization Practices recommended that, the Centers for Disease Control Prevention Director then accepted, uh, that recommendation. So we know that, that that was approved going back a week now. And, um, we also know that the, uh, administration, uh, the US, uh, President, uh, Presidential Administration stated and, and has continued to state that it has ample vaccine supply for our nation's children. So millions of doses, uh, have been distributed nationwide to, and among states, tribes and territories. And, uh, the Indian Health Service is, of course, working with, um, all of our partners to ensure that the doses, uh, are and have been distributed, uh, efficiently and equally across, uh, the various jurisdictions. So, so we are and we have received the pediatric, uh, vaccine and so we're excited about that. So it's just, it's nice to be able to say that IHS has a supply of the pediatric Pfizer vaccine. And then, of course, again, we're working diligently to, um, to get that out there to the public. And, um, again, if you have questions about that, you can reach out to your local health, health facility. And, and when we really think about it, the authorization and approval, uh, for the first COVID nineteen vaccine for children, for those children age groups five to eleven is just one more milestone, certainly in our efforts to protect even more people across the United States and, and here on the nation more specifically. And we know that, uh, parents are going to have questions and, um, and, and that's certainly natural to have, uh, questions about the safety and efficacy. And, um, we just make sure that, um, we're, we're wanting to engage parents and are engaging parents, uh, with our information so that, uh, they have the information they need to make the, uh, informed choices for the respective families. And, um, also we'll, we'll note that there is a national campaign, um, going on at the, again, at the national level. And it's an educational campaign through the Health, Department of Health and Human Services on the, um, uh, booth, or the vaccine, uh, doses, uh, for, uh, children five to eleven years of age. So we'll continue sharing that information as, as we move forward. So again, that's highly recommended, uh, for that age group and, um, we'll continue to monitor our, our supplies and make sure that we, um, have the amounts for the pediatric, uh, the, the pediatric vaccinations. So, uh, please, uh, just bear with us and we'll continue to share information as it becomes, uh, more available on that. But we do recommend that you move forward with that, um, if, uh, if you have children in that age group. Um, in terms of our COVID nineteen testing here on the Navajo Nation, uh, all IHS and tribal health organization, healthcare facilities continue to do testing. So again, we, we know that we've seen, um, some upticks in cases here on the Navajo Nation, some increases. And, um, we're monitoring that closely, sharing that information broadly and making sure that our healthcare facilities across the Navajo Nation all have that good idea of what's going on. So if you're, um, if you're at, uh, in Shiprock, New Mexico, at Northern Navajo Medical Center and, um, you, you do have the ability to know what's happening, I say, like at Tubac City on the west end or Crown Point on the east side. And, um, it's, it's important that we all have that understanding of how COVID nineteen continues to, uh, move and transmit, uh, in, in our populations. So, um, by sharing that information system wide locally, then we're able to address and work with our contact tracers on heading those types of things off and, uh, hopefully putting a stop to, to that, uh, to the illness. Again, with COVID nineteen testing, uh, if you feel like you may have been exposed or if you feel like you're exhibiting some, maybe, maybe it's some minor symptoms, um, you, you know, you can go ahead and contact your local healthcare facility. They can provide you information, but there's also information provided, uh, on the Office of President and Vice President's, uh, Facebook site as well. So please look for that and there's information around communities as well on COVID nineteen testing. So please, please look for that information, um, around. And that testing will continue to be provided. And again, we, we continue to monitor all of our testing supplies. We make sure that we're communicating upwards to our headquarters and others to make sure that we keep ample supplies of the testing materials, uh, in, in stock and in inventory, sharing those throughout the Navajo Nation. Uh, wanted to make, again, just make a comment here on misinformation and, and we know that, um, we, we continue to see issues concerning, uh, vaccinations. And, um, it, it's really important that we continue to focus on our outreach to our Native American populations, um, especially those who are unvaccinated. And, and we're doing, we're trying to do our part to just... Those facts are based on science, as I mentioned earlier. And, um, again, we know that we've been exposed to just a tremendous amount of information on social media, maybe the nightly news, uh, public health guidance, and, and then there's, of course, various rumors that we hear, um, from time to time. And, um, again, that information is, is certainly, um, harmful. It's, it's not helpful to our situation. And so, um, we just recommend again that, that individuals look for reputable sites. If you're going to be on the internet, um, one of the most useful sites is with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, uh, cdc.gov. And you can, uh, search for COVID on that site and, uh, their information is based definitely on science and, uh, it's, it's very helpful if you have questions. And that's one site that we would, uh, recommend. So, um, again, we, we anticipate that we'll continue to see misinformation on the, uh, internet and across various, uh, news channels. However, uh, please just, um, um, think about where the information is coming from. And if you see information that you think's questionable, we ask that not to forward that information as it can have harmful implications on people making decisions, maybe who are not vaccinated at this point, who are trying to make a, an educated, um, decision as to whether or not they want to be vaccinated or should be vaccinated. And again, we, we do certainly continue to encourage and advocate vaccinations, COVID nineteen vaccinations, um, certainly as their safety and efficacy has been demonstrated over and over again. Uh, with that being said, I want to just also remind folks that, uh, want to stress the importance of flu vaccinations as well as since we're entering into the flu season. And, uh, trying to reduce the overall burden of respiratory illnesses is also important along with COVID. So, uh, if you are getting your COVID vaccination, uh, you are also able to get flu vaccinations, um, at the same time. So, uh, uh, flu vaccination is the best way to protect yourself and your loved ones that gets flu and also its serious consequences as well. So just wanted to throw that out there as well for people to think about. And again, I know that it was said earlier, but I just want to take a moment to thank our healthcare, um, warriors across the Navajo Nation. Uh, we mentioned last time whether, whether you're a nurse in the emergency department or a nurse in administration, or if you're a housekeeping, uh, person in the hospital or health clinic environment, everyone is important in this particular pandemic. And it's, it's important to, um, to make sure that our health facilities are clean, that infection control is, is in place and that, um, we're getting those vaccinations out there and we're treating people who need assistance, uh, who may, who may have been infected with COVID nineteen. And folks, I can tell you, the healthcare staff out there are doing everything they can to protect us. And we just ask that you continue to follow the prevention guidelines here on the Navajo Nation because if you're doing that, you're supporting our healthcare team, uh, in, in reducing the number of, of, for the burden of disease here on the Navajo Nation, which can give them relief in terms of the amount of workload that they face every day. So, um, let's continue to get those vaccinations and let's reach community immunity, protect yourself, protect your family and protect your elders. And at this point in time, I will turn the time over to Mr. Dell Yazi, my friend from the, uh, Navajo Nation Epi Department. So take it away Dell when you're ready, sir.
Uh, thank you Captain Johnson. Hello, everyone. Yate, uh, shekido, shidine. Uh, my name is Dell. I'm also on the call with my, my fellow Epi colleague, Dr. Va. She and I will tag team on our Gadiometrics update presentation. So this is a, a two-week, uh, time period of our, um, Gadiometrics, uh, analytical time period from October twenty-second to November fourth. Oh, sorry. Let me put it in. There you go. Uh, so I show this slide, um, every week or during the town hall. Um, some of you might have already seen this because I've shown it previously. This is just to acknowledge, you know, we have a big epidemiology team focusing on COVID disease surveillance, um, that makes up our Epi team. So as you see these, uh, in names of entities on the right, so, you know, my colleagues within the Navajo Epi Center, uh, we also are partnering with folks from the IHS side, the tribal health organizations, also known as the Six Thirty Eight Facilities on Navajo. And then we're also working with some folks from CDC and the CDC Foundation, um, and also the Johns Hopkins Center for American Indian Health. And then also Community Outreach and Patient Empowerment, um, Program. And then TGEN, you know, out of Flagstaff, they're helping us with the COVID strain surveillance. Um, and then of course our, our neighboring states, uh, Departments of Health from Arizona, New Mexico and Utah. So, um, just for everyone's information, these are all the entities, um, we're all partnering together to bring you these numbers and, and do all the epidemiology work on COVID. So, so, uh, recent cases and trends here, these are, uh, this is a sixty-day time window, as President Nez mentioned, the daily case counts, you see these gray bars do fluctuate every day, uh, they go up and down. However, this red line is a nine-day weighted center moving average. It helps to see the, the graph better. It, it, you know, averages out or smoothes out all these fluctuations in the, in the bars, um, to see the, a trend, smoothes it out and you can see the trend better. So the red line, as you can see, since this little bar here is October second, ever since October second and all the way through October and even, um, as of last Thursday is the last day of our analytical time period, November fourth, we continue to see this increase in cases for almost a month and a half now, um, even, even more so from the, the time period beha, uh, before October second. So, uh, we are seeing about eighty to ninety cases, cases a day on average currently, um, at least within this analytical time period. So the eighty to ninety cases on average a day is, is a lot of cases for us. So, um, just want to emphasize that. Our seven-day infection rate is, um, at point nine seven. Our threshold is at one. So we, we were above one for quite some time and we finally, this time, this time period, we were able to, you know, but we, we went below one. So, you know, that's, you know, could be an encouraging sign. This is our, uh, COVID picture or situation, um, spatially on the Navajo Nation. You see all these IHS service areas plus our neighboring states, the Four Corners State. Um, so just, just for clarity, you know, there's requests made for to make these colors different, just as, just to delineate which areas are, you know, essentially doing, um, uh, worse, I guess, worse than others, even though we're all in the red. Um, but, you know, as you see these red, red, um, areas, service areas for Gallup, Shiprock and Kianta are essentially doing the worst, um, on Navajo Nation as far as IHS service areas and as far as seeing the number of COVID cases. And this is our legend over here. So the red ones are, are four, four hundred cases per hundred thousand people is the incident, seven-day incidence rate. And then the orange ones, you know, Tubac, Chinley, Winslow, you know, Crown Point, including our neighboring states are, you know, a, a lesser incidence of COVID, um, two hundred to three hundred and ninety-nine, uh, cases per hundred thousand people. And then the only service area here is for defiance in this, um, lighter shade color here, zero through one hundred and ninety-nine cases per hundred thousand. So that's for defiance service area. So that's, um, spatially, you know, the COVID situation on the nation and around us. Um, and, but we are seeing a lot of COVID cases across the nation, including, as President has mentioned, our, our neighboring states as well. Um, so five hundred and sixty-seven new cases over a seven-day period from October twenty-ninth through November fourth, which puts our incidence at three hundred and fifty-eight cases, three hundred thousand people, which is in the, in the red, the red level of our gating, uh, matrix. Some additional metrics here, our test capacity, our seven-day test positivity rate is at fifteen point eight percent. It did go up a little bit from five, fifteen point one, uh, last reporting period, um, and where there's a lot of testing going on, on the nation, um, over, average daily tests over a seven-day period is about a thousand tests, um, uh, every day, over seven days. So, and then our hospital capacity, you know, hos, hos, regular hospital beds at sixty-one percent, um, average daily occupancy, um, it's below our eighty percent threshold, so that's, that's good. However, our ICU beds, um, at eighty percent average daily occupancy is right at eighty percent. So, um, this is a little concerning, eighty percent is our threshold. So we'll continue to monitor this as we move forward. Uh, we do get the numbers from facilities, um, every day. Sometimes some of them are, are late in their reporting, so there's, we do, you know, use caution to, um, get a, uh, an es, an estimation of these number percentages. So contact tracers, the daily case ratios at one, it remains at one from last reporting period. So this is also, um, an area we're trying to add new, um, contact tracers across the nation. Our threshold's at five, so we're really below five. So, um, I, I know people are trying to, um, hire additional contact tracers to help with contact tracing, um... So I know people are trying to hire additional contact tracers to help with contact tracing on the nation. Here, I'm gonna defer or give some time to Dr. Va to provide an overview on this slide. Dr. Va?
Hi. Good morning. Thank you, Dell. And so this slide, what this slide represents is our vaccine rates across Navajo Nation. As you might have heard earlier, this is a, you know, we have multiple team members across different entities, including IHS as well as our 638 tribal facilities and even academic partners. And we do our best to provide the most updated data across Navajo Nation, week to week. This is as of last week, and we hope to update these numbers by the end of today or tomorrow. And this will be updated on the Navajo Nation Department of Health website as well. What I do to help interpret this slide, what this tells us is that we do focus on the fully vaccinated. And the reason for that is, as Captain Johnson has mentioned and others on this call has mentioned, is that vaccines are our best tool to help prevent severe COVID disease, hospitalizations, and even death. And fully vaccinated status is our best tool. And so of the total population, ages zero on up, 57% of our total population as of last week are fully vaccinated. That also means about 40% are not. And some are, you know, the 40%, it also includes those that can't get vaccinated. And so those are those kids, you know, less than five years of age. Of the population 12 years and older, this is 70%, but we really do focus on that 57% because we know that 40% are still very vulnerable to severe COVID-19 disease. And again, of note, this will be updated hopefully by the end of today, if not by tomorrow. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Va. Moving on, here's our, I think President has showed this so very briefly here. These are our Epi curves for the entire pandemic. The blue line is the US. The orange line is the Navajo Nation. You know, the blue line, we've been, we were seeing decreasing cases across the country for quite some time. And then just, you know, recently, there's a little bit of an uptick here of COVID cases across the US. And then on Navajo side, you know, we've been going up for quite some time. And we did, you know, there were less cases this time, the reporting period, by about 60 cases. So we did go down a little bit and hopefully continue to go down. But we'll continue to monitor that. And I know President has also showed this. So just very quickly, this is our seven-day incidence bar chart from October 29th through November 4th, comparing Navajo Nation to the 50 states. And there are a couple jurisdictions on here. So we are, you know, we remain the same as our last reporting period, at sixth position here. And our neighboring states that go up as well, you know, especially Colorado, New Mexico, and Utah, and Arizona. And I just looked this morning, New Mexico has actually has jumped above Colorado. So our neighboring states are really dealing with increasing COVID cases. And as President has mentioned, is really impacting us here on Navajo Nation as well. This is our COVID strain surveillance latest report, Report 27th as of November 3rd, which is last Wednesday. The only change here is from Report 26 to 27 is the Delta variant here. This row from 636 cases to 656 cases. So that's about 20 cases, new cases identified with the Delta variant. And all the other variants identified on Navajo Nation, there's no change. So a total of 941 cases on Navajo Nation are identified as a variant of concern or a variant being monitored. And hopefully this will get updated this week as well. This is the CDC variant profile across the US. This orange bar is really the Delta variant, representing the Delta variant. So making up about 99.2% of all variants in the US. This is seven-day incidence case rate for 100,000 people, really within our region. There's a lot of high burden of COVID cases currently. And we put Navajo Nation here because this was also a request made to include Navajo Nation here, comparing us to the 50 states. And we would be in this darker shade of blue color for the highest incidence rate of COVID cases over a seven-day period. This community transmission is really high across the US, especially within our region. All the counties, I don't know if you can see the counties here, within Navajo Nation remain red, meaning high COVID transmission. This is our updated high-risk chapter, high-risk chapters for COVID. The green is the last two weeks time period here. There are 56 new chapters that made the list. The last reporting period, there were 58. So this time, we're two less chapters. So could be a good sign, but there's still a lot of chapters, more than half of the chapters made the list this time around. And all the way over here on the red column is, these are the 26 chapters that have been on the high-risk chapter list on a consistent basis for at least six weeks. And so there's the 26 chapters. Recommendation: Risk Level Assessment. Cases remain high in the red threshold, likely driven by the Delta variant. Test positivity remains high at 15.8%. Public Health Capacity. One contact tracer per daily case ratio is less than 5. So and hospital capacity is at 61% for regular hospital beds and right at 80% our threshold for ICU beds. So we'll continue to monitor all these indicators as we move forward into our new, our next reporting period. So last, we remain in the red. All of our Gatyometrics or the indicators are in the red level of our Gatyometrics. So we'll all stop here. And I don't know if Dr. Va has any additional comments, but I'm gonna stop here. Thank you.
Hi, Dell. I do have a few slides to share. And this is just to share with all those out there how to stay safe for the holidays. And so let me just go ahead and share those slides briefly. All right. Let me make sure that everyone can see my slides. My apologies. Here we go. Okay. And so as Dell noted, I wanted to start here. Because as the holidays are approaching, what we try to do, and myself included, you know, what are our risks and how do we stay safe for the holidays? The first way to do that is to know what's happening around you. And so as Dell said, regionally, and here in Navajo Nation, transmission is high. So we be aware of that, right? Why is that? It's because the surge is fueled by the Delta variant. Delta is fast and efficient and can spread so easily compared to other variants of COVID. And so we are in high transmission. So what does that mean? How do you stay safe for the holidays? This is how: masking. We know that we just opened up the pool for vaccinations to those that are 5 to 11 years old. But that just started. As I noted earlier, still about 40% of the total population is vulnerable to severe disease should they get COVID-19. And so masking indoors is still highly recommended to protect that vulnerable population. And even masking outdoors, as per the CDC, is also recommended, especially if you're going to be in large groups, that please consider masking. Masks work. Social distancing and ventilation. And so if you're thinking about a gathering, think about how many people will be there? What is the ventilation like? Are windows open? Are doors open? All of those are key factors in reducing transmission against Delta. Again, Delta is very fast and efficient at spreading. The other tool that we have is testing, rapid testing. Consider testing before meeting your family. That can play a role in having a safe holiday. And what Captain Johnson has said and others have said, vaccinations, vaccines continue to be our number-one tool at preventing COVID-19. And remember, there's that 40% that's still very vulnerable. And so if you can vaccinate, please vaccinate. If you are already vaccinated, please discuss your experience with your friends and family. Studies and survey studies have shown that people listen to friends, people listen to family. And so if you are already vaccinated, try to encourage your family members who are not yet vaccinated and can get vaccinated, please get vaccinated. Now, the last option here is if you're symptomatic, don't go to the gathering. Please stay home. And if you're symptomatic and you test positive, please be aware that we do have monoclonal antibody treatment available at our facilities. So reach out to your healthcare provider if you are positive and ask about that. We do have treatment available to reduce the risk of severe disease, hospitalization, and death. If this hasn't been discussed already, I'm just going to summarize it again just so that we're all on the same page and that this information is out there, is that boosters are available for all three vaccines. And the reason for that, the surge that we're seeing, is that we do know that 40% of the population still is unvaccinated. And so that's driving our cases. And we know vaccines work. Most of those that are hospitalized now are unvaccinated. And so vaccines help in reducing severe disease, reducing the risk of hospitalization, and reducing the risk of death. Vaccines do wane over time, and that's why boosters are now needed for all three vaccines and are available for all three vaccines. If you received a Moderna or Pfizer vaccine more than six months ago, you are eligible in regards to timing for a booster. If you received the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine more than two months ago, you are also eligible for a booster. And so what vaccines are available for boosters? All three: Moderna, Pfizer, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. Who is eligible for booster shots? 18 years and older and six months after completing Moderna and Pfizer. 18 years and older and after two months after completion of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Can people mix and match vaccine brands for boosters? CDC's recommendation now allows for mixing and matching as needed. Is the booster shot free for you out there? Yes, it is. Is it safe to get both the flu vaccine and COVID-19 vaccine? Yes, it is, and you can get it at the same time. Now, as of last week, kids ages 5 to 11 years can now receive the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine. Why is that? It's because there is a public health urgency and emergency to address this population. Kids have been negatively impacted. Kids can get severe COVID-19 disease. Kids are at risk for hospitalization and death. And there are long-term complications that come along with COVID-19. In addition to that, missed school days at school. And then, you know, the loss of loved ones and caregivers because kids can transmit COVID-19 to family members as well. And so CDC now recommends the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine for kids 5 to 11 years old. The Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine is over 90% effective at preventing COVID-19 in kids 5 to 11. COVID-19 vaccines have undergone and continue to undergo the most intensive safety monitoring in US history. And so are COVID-19 vaccines safe for kids in this age group? Yes. Data have been shown that they are indeed safe and effective. Is this vaccine the same as the Pfizer vaccine given to adults and adolescents? No, it's not the same. It's the same active ingredient, but it is one-third the dose with smaller needles and designed specifically for kids in this age group. Is the COVID-19 vaccine for kids free? Yes, it is. Is it safe to get both the flu vaccine and the COVID-19 vaccine together for kids? Yes, it is safe to do that. And so for this holiday season, please get vaccinated, stay safe, and please stay tuned for vaccine availabilities and events near you. Thank you.
Yana na te, shikai ro shidne. Aden ha ta'asayokezi do da isunoh saink. Jo kodja inaholji, kodonikil ishtan alzani. Di de kusnas e'ta daphidi ninni na lnihi. Jo e i yasibinat jo kodov hanai inelki. Na na la jo ohna hanai gi e. Oyo, oyoni dilges iosin leh. Kodi kodosh e, naxa etcha na hashne'oleh. Kodolte ni chencha zee ea captain Brian Johnson do ya e di. Ezeel e adi etalade na tani. E ea yeha nihilne kodol, nihi na tani nlini. Laj elke'is ke'negi. E e xaxin tsagundle etcha da axi do. Adi nihil ishtan iosani e ba'achet nisandne. Ado kodol chenin da'chre jim e ro yeha. Adi ezeel inahadre bina tani etalade na tani nlini nido yeha. Ado shidine'eh na lini nihi dene'eh na lini nihi do yeha. Aden kudjachada okisi axi inii kodov hanainde ilii nde. Ado lahto she'ekodol o nihir walshna inelii nde. Jo dene'eketjo lahto ben hitaya tiho e bohunetza do nenne. Akodi etse bahadeh shnehigi ea inne. Di xaxin tsagodi ezeel ibelnahaz ano betsi ishtlaji. Be ezeel inidoo nihi judo adi e inii chaklahto de ninni tlini. E achano ihi lnde'ibnesh. Ado di ezeel ibelnahaz ano na tani danlini. Ado talaso, adi belnahaz ani judo adi do elhi chane'etja do. Ilkesedit i, akoe ba'achet nihi. Anadi elhi tani. Akondedi de kusnas e'ta daphidi ninni gi nihi chanhne'i. Do tdi eda lah akokha la na chaidoba. Ni go'ikha. Ako lahto e bitchne'epa. Ado hi chane'etja ho e nacha kodoni. Akodi wutan hi lho a e o yugo anani na anthin. Nihi china ado la'tyugo ati nilkha. Dobik esedit i. Akodi ezeel ibelnahaz ano anani di dehunana tsa. Akondeh adi e nilkha dobik esedit i. Ako ezeel ingone seskavanas ago oyomi ta'ani. Jo akondeh halit a. Aya inado nikdi noh tabenahui. Ado di da'chha hi do biti biti huye. Ako adi xaxi noh la'andah. Makhne'igi nihi do yeha. Ado ena hanai di ezeel nihi chahol ya'i gi ba'achet nizen. Asta adama ansos. Jo kontemien. Ya'ji she'kunna na e nihi chahol ya' ezeel nlini. Ako shikai ro shidne'eh di ezeel nlini nihi chahol ya' e xaxi na na ea. Etze'zen nlini aden dahadete. Nchaa apen se kesidoo. Nchinal kidepita. Jo e laho yo'chid nlinigi dahadete. Lahto adi kodah. De isunidado adi kodah de inikla akondeha jo. Ezeel ibelnahaz ano ezeel nlini bethi hi lta'holne. Adi e jo'n hi lchadoni, jon hi lne. Ado na kunna e di ezeel naxa ta'al ya'n nlinigi jo e kala bina olka e booster. Chaa onne ezeel anani gi jo e Moderna la Johnson &amp; Johnson. Ado Pfizer dechneni. Jo e benapen wilyani gi jo e adi. Elona astli. Akodi adi e ezeel nlini naxa ta'dolni. Akodi ezeel ibelnahaz ano e be'eda'ol kanto narso sneni beh nasos. O she'la ta'oyo. Walchola inahol ii deh jo e ezeel inidanlini ezeel nika da'danlini. Adi de'ibneshi nabedolkit. Ado di adi nilltred osabiyetna ki oyol khalen da'e. Naxa alchin nihi ya'ji nihi awet nlini ishtla'beda chaidonle lahto daphedakid. Ezeel nlini pa'ena'azni ako adi do pa'achet nizen. Do adi naxa ye'ena'asne'i e i yeha. Haladi naxa alchin nihi ya'ji nihi awet nlini e. Lahto bedo pa'achu yaniadoleh. Bik esedit i doleh akondeh amado yeha. Etche' amasane'ena le danolini. Lahto bar na adede shkelna'sano. Lahto, lahto she'la ta'oyo bitchne'ijilni leh. E she'ekwa ezeel inidanlini adi chinryarit. De ezeel in nlini cha'jo ye'ni lchadoni. Ado di na'chnihigi nalchahi. Lahto she'oyo shidornat. Nisandle. E adi nihi ta'dhunana tsa akokha she'noh la she. Shidornat. La yo' deskhus entetni spashitcha hanes geshitcha hanes do. Jo akoda ehi e di na'chahi e ezeel ibelnahaz ano. Adi akoda nido ati nda'chahi e adete. Ako enhi lne kodol Captain Johnson. Ashkumore yana ko kha shikai ro shidne. Ezeel nlini naxa ta'dolni. Ado di de kus nlini do i ni do bitza. Ada'atsi e do lahto bethi chada'ol se'jon hi lne. Haladi nihi yon nihi tsis nlini do ad e hi e da'chha anid. Ado ea i yeha benadeh shni di ezeel ino ne'adonshi. Ezeel nika hi do xaxin tsobka etcha dahne'ido ishtdahbini. Ashkona shikai ro shidne. Eda'dahabian do ihi chaka di jaha ezeel naxa ta'dolni jon hi lne. Ado na ne'ehi di she'ya'ji nlini de'ya'ji. E e di kodol. Na'aschahi gi jo e kodoyen hi lna'sande. Akodi ra'je na dino ana ki olkhasida'olle nillchetos eti oyoskhasne. Astchan, tischan di jidje na'ascha ako oyoh. Ra'je tso'talo yo'khasido di edana jen. Jo akone na ea nihi tva'tegonad eskit shikai ro shidne. Ako e she'ekodol naxa pa'ahonos andoleh di tso'tiljenje. Akodi nihi nagohot ehi gi ye'go nihi tva'tenad eskit. Ako adi litschiigi bi nekha bi ikha. E lahto chadi kha'idi ezeel naxa ta'dani gi she'lahto ishte'ido tli. Akodi thodine'eshi doleh. Thojdo na'ndjo'ra adi ye'go de'deskit nihi tva. Ado akone e na'achahi gi ati ana'achahi ezeel ibelnahaz ano. Teske'igi e abedahuye. Ado di na'achahi do alla. Akodi nihi dene' bethi chodzo'byee e xaxine'la. Eze'ad ene ba'ha'talia. Alla ne'zat dino ana astchan demilia'ji. Toba cebetino a'shtlatin akone na e di. Ezeel nlini ad ene ba'ha'talia. Akondeh. Do shidodo'na do jenozi itehi itela shikai ro shidne. Jashi a eze'ha ta'al ya' de. Anjera kodapha akonadodo'na hota e she'kodol naxa pa'ahonos. Akodi ishtlatin chahodzo'hi nihi kaya. Ado di nihi dene' bikaya'igi. Jo adi elchahne'innelo e di ishtlati chahodzo'ye'go. De deskinne yonana lkel. Ado tegonad eskit. Akodi nihi dene' bethi chodzo'ji di kodol. Tsutsuli ya'holne'iphezade. E e nihi tva'ya' nihi tegodeskinne ya'gonana lkel jon hi lne. Ado di ishtlatin bethi chodzo'ji nihi di dene' bethi chodzo'ji oyokha'innan hi lkel. Ano ne'ehi debensa. Yo thojdo e traptio na ilkelne e traw ne'nasni. Ado di hos dogidro a ye'go de'deskit. Ado na kunna e di. De kusnas e'ta daphidi ninni lahto intolni. Jo e Delta variant. Bidi ne. E tki lo na lni do. Do, do alla egis tsa'ra ako la'tyugo tski la'beda de'na. Adi e di na'tingo nihi tva'tehunayitla. Ako ad ene konas e' nisat dino anis dino a'ala. Jo akone eh ne'hi lkel. Ado di nihi nagohot ehi. Ado di tva'tanas le bethi chodzango. Adi jo e adi asha'ra nisat dino onesna esamta'atle. Ako adi ea ishtlatino astchan. Yilta'ao e di chapter ha'sanlini adi a'achha. E ea adi ye'go high risk nihi ye'gonasni adi. Akodi esamta'atleho lahto da'tidoo hi chajo ye' ta'dahaniada. Jashi. Etchin ado. Da, da bedi nindetchin da she'adinda'kha'jo e la'ylinda'kha'no ba'dahane. Ado ea di ati e litschi bi ikha shikai ro shidne. Nda'chahi ati nda'chha. Ado di Delta variant la'ontolni lka nlinigi e do ati tski honato. Ako ad ene go ati litschiigi bi ikha. Ado di kuesche' nlini da'chva. E e hi lne'chale'ta e. Chajo na torga jo ea hinachana'sla di lka. Kesmish ya'ji chahodeh she'jon hi lne. Halit a e be'eta'achu yaniadoleh jon hi lne. Jo anhi init ad ea. Nihi nagohota cha'afzii. Ado di lahto intolni la'ni tski honato. Ado adi godzki la'ahnan chi. Ako ashkona nihi lne nihi chi'to nihi ze'abedada despa. Ho wa'onde'na'ha deh beni abedada despa. Halah xaxinoh la ea'hanne'hi hi lna'solcha. Chago she'na'ani do behelsenda tchadi ya'go da. Adi ash'tla'adah do ya'gonana lkel do t'eh lahto atle. Ado di hunne'eta na na'solcha da. Tso'son da dadilkha da'adadadeinosen ado o. Da'deskha do da'despa leh jo akonhi lne jo e di ventilation lne. Ado na'achahi do kalla. Adi na'achahi do la naxa ta'dohneltadohno da she'ei she'ilo t'eh do lkel. Ado ezeel naxa ta'dolni. Di xaxine'la e di dene. Lahto ba'adseho yilchadahro da'adeh leh ako. E she'ilo ba'ahonosen e esentemare ol'ya. Jo e ea bedchanes gego da do. Do ensh'teh da'danoda yilchadahro da. Yilnachani ya'go da. Jo adi chexi chatskis nlini be'bitre inahol jo a ye'go be'idenoski la'ta. Ado na ne'ehi booster sha'li lne e do'chulno. Di tchan na'atadsehi gi jo e do'chulno to'edellne. Ado nihi ya'ji nihi awet nlini ishtla'beda chaidonle lahto dha'jo e do eze'bahazni. Ako e Pfizer nlini adi ba'ha'tolni. Alchin nihi ya'ji nde bedo'do'na hota shikai ro shidne. Ado ezeel irne'ya'ha do'gashnde. Ako t'odolni ulchata ni hisihu. Od'adat odolni e'na. Koshita eze'bahatolni. Ado di eze'bahatna ea di tsah nlini do'ne'za ea'altse si cho'ki. Ako jo e kodol ta'chva nlini. Od'aya na'sne shikai ro shidne. Ako na shidne ea i yeha nihi dene' shni shikai ro shidne. Kudjachada okis. Do nda'isunoh tsi. Axi inii lahto. Dene' do da'dosan da'dehtjo xaxin zagoh si'stza lahto abik esedit. Xaxine'la do dene' nli da'dehno t'honhi sa. Bethi anli do yidaholl'a. Akon anhi hi do'hot'a'olne. Nihi sa nlini bethi daholl'a. Akodi de kusnas e'ta daphidi ninni gi ban ta'hu'ilnehi. Jo e ite. Na na la jo kudjepesoda na'hadre i she'kudjepeda'ini she'et o et e da e kodon naxa pa'ahonosen. I yeha nihi dini doleh ma'ani nohlini. Xaxin zagoh hu'tapi ilkha'adena kinacha. Pa'ewet ela. Do she hu'ta' do'tshi dan'te. Do she hu'ta. Dene' da'dol tchata dan'te. Xaxin zagoh she'nda'iyizii. Akondeh. Jo she'ee e lahto nihi na'anthinan tne. Ado nihi talahtso tchah i yeha da bedonne. Ado kon. Naxa alchin nihi ya'ji nihi awet. Bela'ash'tla'innlini ezeel ino ne'adeh shi e ro yeha. Ado kodol nihi masane nihi che'nihi nalle. Nihi madon nihi yeh pacha ta'okisi nihi do yeha. Shidne shikai ro shidne. O t'honai lna'ot e di. Inaltoigi. Lahto. Pa'ya'ji lti. Ado lahto be'etcha'ho'ji lne. Pa'ewet ela. Halit a nihi dene' do da is'tfa'la. Ye'go on da'snoftki'sma na. Jo hu'inzelhala. Sanin hes'twi. Amaya'ji amajeno halit a. Sha'alchin do da is'tfa'la. Di kua'do tsi itehi ite. Do ya'ad e na'ldoi de kusnas e'ta daphidi ninni. Lahto intolni li to'joba'i. Ya. Xaxine'la nihi dene' nlini bikaya'dahastin. Ani hi inii ite'la do do'ta'achu yaniadoleh. Eze'bahazni nihi t'ne'inde bitchne'ena'ani tle. Chaysh e kua'eh shan eze'ba'tsa'ot esenada eze'eta. Fa'adne'ho chitosen leh. Jo ea ena anthinah oyoba'adadi kha'at. Do t'ho'be'ena'ani tchenla. Oyu naxa hes'twin hi sa'ani da'shatanlini la'ike'dahastin. La'tadso'ashon indaholl'a hola. Jo di ezeel ibelnahaz ano el'aa'at edo el'aa'ani. Adi eze'bahazni ezeel i go dan'tadokahi. Adi nda'adonshi da'dinosen. Halah e kodol hi chana'lo. Ako shikai ro shidne ashkona ezeel nlini naxa ta'dane. Do nosano. Do nihi l'igo e ltsa'ahonwa desokda. Honwa denanish o oyui. Ado nda'lnishin nohlini. E do di katsav test kitlne e she'kadi chahona ta'dane. E do chajo edo'li oh'la. Nihi e di Division of Human Resources adi demonstration chavandi. Chilo. He'et a da'ani hi t'ol'chat jo e do bedahodil. O yugo ye'nan hi lne'schan shikai ro shidne'ehi naxa lni. Nihi tva'tol do e nizen. Ado di chajo kesmish ya'ji kesmish. Njono nihi ena da'do'cha e nizen. Ani tska'eh kodoh yo' danhimi ne. Akodi tsi ni do da'ad eze'bahononi flu'teh nlini. Adi do eze'da naxa ta'dolni. Akodi. Etta'achol ya' nbedi nni. E da'ta'chajo be'ni hi lchadoni. Jo etta'achodjelia jo e anhi hinachana'sla. Ha'rgota dunya'go da. Nitschi do nize'abedada despa. Ina'go etta'acholzi. Shidro'ro'apet e nsekhesa e n'bi isn'ta n'batshikhus. Chajo n'hitzitki. Ado di chyan chinlni do chajo chyan chinlne. Api rako. Ado etcha'holzesha nlinigi ilto'na'adiltsa. Jo e she'ol'ya etta'achodjelia. Ado di na na la'te na na tali do. E do pa'ahonosne. Do adi anit ea'at eda. Aden la'ta'ikha'ho ta'ta'ikha'ho na'chahu'ji do'ni. Adi pachu'ji do'la. Edjo'la'sa'hol'ol'wello da'ahot e. Do oh'no tshel'ta. Jo e she'ani hi. Naxa na'sla shikai ro shidne. Xaxine'la. Nihi tlke'jo kenlini. Do da is'tsa da'dasni di she'kanda o'endeskes. Na ea na'hatne'na'hatno da. Jo anhi init e honwa do do'chajo be'ena'ani tcheni init e. Nihi ya'ji nihi awet naxa alchin nihi tso'kenhe na'likha'jo be'da'notchen. Sho he'ko'epa'eta'achol ya. Shidoh'te. Ado na nish'teyen ya'de na tani e'ta'tesen. Ban jilnishi be'da'jilnishi ta'hi ttesen. Na tani da'ahana'at e. Na tani nlo ado shi'la'ha'stigen zenne. Nan da'adonshi ba'chansen o yugo ba'anthin shikai ro shidne. Akondeh. Ho'wada e na'anthin chahila. Akodi aden ha'ta'sa'okisi shikai nohlini. Shama shi yeha. She'be'ji da she'da'nohne. Shama ya'ji shida'keh, shama ya'ji keh. Halah ne'la'ta she'an ta'hi tainde. Ihi ta'huilza'ho. Ado talaso. Behenit inaholji. Da'denosen to'da'donsen. Ado di na la'ta'da'nohlini. Nasos da'deno ahi. Naxa ta'donsen nihi yen da di tsa'ehi yeha shikai ro shidne. To'da'ani anhi init ad e'ishtetna di kha. Nihi sa'ehi yen. Nihi tso'chadahazla de jo e e nihi sa'na'hanilia. Chajo ba'achol ya. Ado ana'ndle di tchadohleha. Sa'do ya'ad ehi e do bi'ra'jinjoni do'halak e do leh da'danoda da'hanainde. Ako ashkona nihi sa'ba'achol ya. Ado di lcha'apen se kesi kadi chahodal ya'i. E do chajo chol'e. Ado ana'ndle di sa'beda'osshishe. Halah chexi be'jinnini. Ada e ha'cha'andol walla'ot e leh e na'ba'achonosen be'eta'achol ya. O yugo hes'twi do sanin bena'anthin dahola. Xaxine'la na'hashtwi do'hi sa'ni nihi tva'ike'dahastin. Akondeh bena'anthin e do'ati hida. Chajo. Chol'ido chajo di hida'ahnil. Chajo be'ena da'notchen. Ako yeha nihi dini doleh kudjachada'sa'okisi. Chago da ch'adada do'kha'go ch'ad. Ch'adada da'nosana beni ye'go noh'te'ya shikai ro shidne. Etchin e itse'be'ni itse'ahonwa de. Ba'achan hu'inzene beni na. O shkua'sha'odse na'to'di kha. Do jenozi ite'la do. Halah chago she'jdayani gi. Chadani ya'ni chalek edolni chago she'tchadiya jo e do'ha'san da'to. Ha'di she'la halde'go da. Elhi ilde'oda aden da'natal'halak edolni o da. Ado chos'to'itini bena'tse'da do ch'jol'igo ado o'jinya o da. Do tdi e akodoli e she'ah lne be'eta'achol ya. Ado etta'no'ya o da. Akonoltaha ea shikai ro shidne. Ya'ad enasla aden da. Jo xaxin zagoh di na'to' anhi ite'la chajo. Si'tago o'tcha'da dekhem ado ho'wane'nehota na'danhinne. Oh'ansat na'ol'leh di she'ad o'te'ha. Ado na nish'ta'ahana'at e. Ahana nish'to'stano. Do'st'ha'ho'te'go. E be'ha. Do ishta ha ot ego, eh behodin, eh oyuni nihi de na, danhise. Ena konlego hatna da shoyu betritni. Ado shi inzasha, eh rujenini, na shidetonni. Ilta adje eh chonpetanetne la do. Na nish go do ya go, bina tsido. Na nish bina tsido eh she inya ha go da nihilna da eh jeshani bina tsidne. Joo kodat ehita, ntsa ilkes. Joo pa sen do kezo joo in indilni. Ha la nas go ne tne jee. Nihi keb bichena da ilti do eh nizen xik eiro xidne. Kon tsaga xi kodol nacha etcha na hos isne dole. Do, be itani ita, nihi, nihi, etcha na hos isne dole. Ado nas go ne tne jee eh ya, eda daholni xik eiro xidne. Altone ba eh yeh nosen. Di nahosan be ka ni dani ba eh yeh nosen, joo de nosen. Ado la danse ilkes, a a ni o oyuygo. Do shto, shle do xidodol na da. Do zenozi ite da. Ako be eta achwilia do, be eta cha nosen. Be shbehanetan da a ni otar be etcha taha lne. Do be hazanda. Di xi a tchlini na hasthwidosani, naso do eh hazanda. Joo yanki, joo za be yanki. A ye go ba shidishke lde. Joo nacha ahonosen do oyodan hi ni, nihi bina.